I'd like to call the Garden Grove City Council meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Councilmember Broadwater?
Here.
Councilmember Doe?
Here.
Councilmember Wynn?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Jones?
Here.
Mayor Dalton?
Here. Okay, we'll have the invocation by Keith Jones, Public Works Director, and the pledge of allegiance by Councilman Broadwater. Yes, we have some presentations.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and I'd like Keith Jones to make these presentations this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Fratell. This evening, the Garden Grove City Council pays tribute to two former highly commended city employees whose constant and meaningful work in the community have earned them the prestigious title of 2010 Garden Grove Citizens of the Year from the Cypress College Americana Awards. Would Lon and Linda Cahill please come forward? Each year, the Americana Awards honor citizens from the eight cities, including Garden Grove, that form Cypress College's primary service area. Award recipients are chosen based on their humanitarianism, philanthropy, and partnership efforts within their communities. As husband and wife, Lon and Linda's lifelong vow to love, honor, and cherish has extended further to their selfless work for the community of Garden Grove. Following their fateful meeting and subsequent marriage while both working for the city of Garden Grove, the Cahills initiated a united front of service and support to organizations and causes that continue to this day. Linda's early work involved serving the frail elderly, a cause she took to heart and to new heights. Her efforts to expand a single congregant meal site resulted in the creation of Acacia Adult Day Services. Today, more than thirty years later, Linda continues to serve the facility as a board member in several leadership capacities. Adding to her milestone work with the senior population is her longtime work with Ser Optimus International of Garden Grove, Senior Meals and Services Board of Directors, Garden Grove Boys and Girls Club, United Way Leadership Circle, Chalk Walk, and the Garden Grove Sister City Association. With a career in fire suppression, Lon's calling to aid those in need reflects in his professional as well as personal duty to the community. Prior to his promotion to Garden Grove Fire Chief, Lon served as Division Chief and President of the Boys Club before it was renamed the Boys and Girls Club. Soon after, he was appointed trustee of the Hoag Foundation where he now oversees property donated to the Boys and Girls Club, as well as other construction projects. His work continues as well with the Garden Grove Strawberry Festival Association, Chalk Walk, Marine Corps League, Toys for Tots, Garden Grove Rotary West, and the Garden Grove Sister City Association. Their lifelong dedication to their city, careers, family, and community make them a brilliant team Garden Grove is truly proud and privileged to have in its corner. At this time, the Garden Grove City Council would like to present Lon and Linda Cahill with a resolution in honor of their meritorious recognition as 2010 Cypress College Americana Awards Garden Grove Citizens of the Year. Congratulations on this very well-deserved achievement.
I'd like to present you with that. Thank you for everything that you've done and everything that you continue to do. Thanks, Lon. After we have a picture, I'd like to say a few words, both of you.
One, two, three.
I remember you when you had dark hair. Of course, I had blond hair then, too.
Well, thank you so much. It's something that Lon and I do out of love for our city family and the community. And, you know, involve our own family, and it's something that we just enjoy doing. So being recognized for that is really quite an honor, especially here in Garden Grove because we have so many great volunteers in the city that help the city in all kinds of ways. But thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and also the council. All I'd like to say, I do, we do appreciate this. Thanks for this recognition. It's not necessary. But Keith is the most eloquent city yard guy I've ever seen. Thanks, Keith.
Okay, we have a business spotlight?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and Keith will give this presentation as well.
Tonight, the Garden Grove City Council presents its monthly business spotlight highlighting local businesses within the Garden Grove community. This evening's recognition goes to one of the city's most prominent beauty schools. Tam and Lynn Wynn of the Advanced Beauty College, please come forward. Tam and Lynn Wynn, brother and sister, are proprietors of Advanced Beauty College located at 10121 Westminster Avenue, at the northeast corner of Westminster and Brookers. Their parents started this second-generation family-run enterprise by first opening a West Covina Nail Salon in 1977. They were pioneers in expanding the nail salon business, which began in Southern California, and opened a second salon soon after. In 1987, the Wynn's sold their shops and opened a college in Westminster where they were leasing a building. The family purchased the Garden Grove facility in 1991 and has been at that location ever since. The business recently had a major facelift and celebrated its grand reopening in May 2009. The Wynn's retired approximately ten years ago, at which time Tam and Lynn took over the business. Tam handles community outreach and serves as marketing director, and Lynn handles operations and serves as director of education. Advanced Beauty College is one of the few accredited beauty schools in the area, which means the college can offer financial aid to its students. They offer certificate programs for aspiring cosmetologists, manicurists, and cosmeticians. Advanced Beauty College is among the top in the state in numbers of licensed manicurist graduates, with pass rates consisting over ninety percent. Upon graduation, students are both stateboard and salon-ready. In addition to running one of the most successful beauty colleges in the state, Tam and Lynn are very active in the community and also give back to their birth country. Every November, Tam, who is a licensed M.D., visits Vietnam as a doctor on a pediatric medical missions organized by Garden Grove-based Project Vietnam. Tam and Lynn were recently recognized by Viet Salon Magazine as the top brother and sisters owners. They were also featured as role models on KSCI, an Asian-American television station in Los Angeles. In August 2009, Tam was elected to serve a two-year term as president of the Vietnamese Chamber of Commerce of Orange County. He is also an active member of the Garden Grove Chamber, serves on the Board of Directors for the California State University Fullerton Alumni, and acts as a consultant to the Dean of International Programs for California State University of Fullerton. Tam and Lynn have built strong relationships in the Garden Grove community and sponsor many community organizations and events, including the Tet Festival, the Vietnamese Beauty Expo, and Miss Garden Grove Pageant, and the St. Alansum's Cross-Cultural Community Center, just to name a few. When Tam and Lynn aren't at work or volunteering in the community, they enjoy spending time with their families and traveling internationally. At this time, the mayor and city council would like to present Tam and Lynn Wynn with a resolution and gift for being honored at the February 2010 Business Spotlight. Garden Grove salute Advanced Beauty College and Tam and Lynn Wynn as outstanding business owners and community supporters.
Give this to Linda, hold it, because the other, this is so beautiful. I took it out of the box because I want everybody to see it. After we have a picture taken, I'll give you the box and everything so you can put it in for transportation.
Hey, what about me?
Yeah.
Hey, what about me? E-Trade, baby.
One, two, three.
I'm gonna take another one, just in case.
One, two, three.
No, no, let me give you these, and then I'd like you to say a few words. That goes over, and then this, this slide out.
First of all, we'd like to thank our parents for founding the business, first and foremost. As second-generation business owners here in Garden Grove, we want to thank the leadership of the city, the staff, the wonderful staff, and the greater community that we work in. We feel very blessed to be business owners here in Garden Grove, especially with, in lieu of the economy the way it is, and in lieu of difficult times in doing business, we feel blessed in being able to, continuing to serve the Garden Grove and greater community in training folks in our vocational school, also to continue to serve the beauty needs of the greater community. If anyone's out there watching tonight on this business spotlight and mentions that you saw us here, please come in for a free manicure. So that, we want to extend that to the greater Garden Grove. So please note that. But again, thank you again for the leadership. Appreciate you again. We're very proud in this past year to be able to remodel and be, to have a modern facility and be part of the greater Garden Grove landscape. And when everyone drives down Westminster Avenue in Garden Grove, we're proud to say that we own Advanced Beauty College. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, I'll open oral communications for the council and the agency. Vu Wynn.
I have to admit, a little bit of fish out of water here, first time speaking in public.
Why don't you pull the mic a little bit closer, and then, yeah, there you go, that's better.
Worked better?
Yes.
My name is, good evening. My name is Vu Wynn. I'm here as a resident of Garden Grove to offer ideas for the pursuit of the Vietnam War Museum. And my family have been here since, resident of Garden Grove since 1992. Graduated from Rancho Almeida's High School in 98. Same with Steve. I graduated from Southern California Institute of Architecture, worked for Jody for a while, which I think I've done work with the city recently. But most importantly, I'm here as a resident who cares and want to care about the future of the city. And so the idea of a Vietnam War museum can be a great place for the community. It could be potentially become a place for the entire community, not just those who are interested in the Vietnam War and the study of the Vietnam War. And it could be a place for learning and research about the subject, and it could also be a place, a catalyst, for a creative Garden Grove. And I think that's where I'm headed with my ideas. And however, I think spending twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars on a feasibility study is probably not warranted, and there are other mechanisms by which we can get those ideas, even for free. And I'll get into that for a second, in a second. And I think we should take this opportunity to look carefully and to integrate the museum as part of Garden Grove's future development. And in my mind, the kind of overarching goal is to develop the museum as a place for discussion, for creativity, as a catalyst for gathering creative people and creative ideas. And there are many cities who have done that successfully, to develop their cities into a kind of creative center. So that's one part of the kind of vision that I have, if you will. And as far as how to get those ideas for the museum, well, first, let me, let me go back and, and, and want to look at the, how the museum should be structured. I think it should be as a nonprofit or a not-for-profit entity, by which I mean is to alleviate as much of the financial burden from the city as possible. And there, you know, there are plenty of museums that do that, where you can get, you know, private donors, private seed donors, even admissions from gallery exhibits, and grants from large organizations, and federal grants, and also city contributions. So that's, that's my little ambition. And I think to get to a kind of a design of a museum, the city could really look into it being an open competition, as much, you know, similar to like an open bid contract, if you will. And because there are plenty of ideas out there, large pools of talent that we can, that we can use to come up with ideas for the museum. And it's, 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 there are many public organizations, private organizations have used that mechanism as a way to get tons of ideas for a museum. And all we have to do is set up a kind of jury of experts, design experts, subject experts, and city residents to do that. And I can count so many examples of that. And best of all, it's pretty much, we could do it for free, without having to pay.
Okay, can you kind of wrap it up, your time's up?
So that's, that's my little proposal, and I'll be happy to speak in person to any members of council.
Thank you. Okay, Craig White.
Good evening, Mayor, Pro Tem, council members. We've come this evening to talk to you and give you an opportunity to preview a residential rental situation that we have in our one zone. And in accordance with your new looking at municipal co-ordinances on Item 10B that you were looking at recently, we wanted to take note and let you be aware of our submittal that we've offered here to Kathy, for you to take a look at in your leisure, what it means to be a residential rental for both long-term as well as short-term, which previously we've had the honor in Garden Grove to have. And we've had a unique situation, not only to share in, with our community in Garden Grove, but we've also had a unique opportunity to provide a very wonderful opportunity for people abroad, Canada, England, Ireland, Australia, different places where people have taken time to come out to see Garden Grove, not only to visit the surrounding area, which is predominantly where we're located, at 11691 Jewel Lane in Garden Grove, which is pretty much directly in behind the Anaheim Convention Center near the Disney Resort, but we're also then adjacent to Harbor Boulevard and Chapman Avenue where Garden Grove has its high-rise hotels located in a commercial one zone. This area has been unique in as far as, when we first moved in in 1986, it virtually, as most of you remember living here, it didn't have quite the commercial hotels and zoning as it does. The high rises, although they overlook the entire residential community that is adjacent southeast of the corner of Orangewood Avenue and Harbor Boulevard, has a unique opportunity now in as far as either selling their properties, of course, now with the economy being what it is and financial institutions not doing as well as they are, many people aren't able to maintain a good resale value. And with the hotels and such that are around Harbor Boulevard, it's difficult now to actually sell our homes. So a lot of us have utilized the opportunity to have long-term rentals, of which we have done as well. And being in the situation that we're in, we're finding that long-term renters are not as lucrative as they used to be, and many are not able to go from even month to month, let alone year to year. So in accordance with that, and trying to assist and help bring in renters, we've offered things like cable TV, full furnished facilities, so they have an opportunity to have accommodations that they're not having to move in all their materials, to make renting a little bit more opportune for them. And in doing so, we realize that even at that, there's minimal amount of renters that feel they can afford to rent even month to month. So we found that when offering short-term rentals, we found that we have an opportunity now to bring in a broader base of higher residential clients rather than long-term, which sometimes can be a little destructive on the neighborhood or destructive on the property, that the short-term rentals are here to visit the community and to visit the Disney Resort and to see what Garden Grove has as a unique opportunity within its location. So we've also had the opportunity to let these individuals use their weekly time, or their bi-weekly, or three weeks, or whatever they come out to see this area, as a potential preview of our property in which to purchase. And this gives an option now that we don't have locally, so we can go outside of our financial market, outside of our given area, and not be dependent on the market sales here, because we're looking at a broader scheme of people coming from other areas. So we've had people that have shown tremendous interest that Garden Grove, as well as Anaheim, would be definitely a place that they would like to live in. So being both my wife and I in the architectural industry and having lived abroad, we've found that to be diplomatic with the people that are coming in for short-term rental, as well as to have an opportunity to share what not only Orange County has, to yield an opportunities for their children or for their growth, for their families and businesses, but why this particular area where our home is located, in this unique area, is something that we wish to share and show them why it would be opportune for them to either come back as a good renter, whether it's short-term or long-term, but also to have that opportunity to purchase the property should they desire to do that. And many in the past that we've talked with have shown tremendous interest, and we're in process now.
I should wrap it up.
In process now of finalizing those opportunities for them. We thank you for the opportunity to speak and hope that you have time to look at our...
Thank you. Marilyn White.
Hi. Craig said a great deal about what our concern is regarding that property. We're one of a number of people throughout Garden Grove that have been offering short-term as well as long-term rentals, and we were guided as to how to do this through the Garden Grove City Business Department, as to what the exact guidelines were when it would be short-term. We did extensive research prior, and granted, it took us probably about nine months due to some confusion to come to the proper format in which that was to occur. We had also prior rented our house back about eight years ago, when we had, one year we had to live in Japan due to my job, and at that time, we had done it through a property management company and had not fully understood how the business license process worked. And so when we called and checked zoning, it took us literally a series of about nine months before we understood the business license process. And when we went into Pam Gillis, she gave us full information then, once we were informed correctly, and it, again, it took a while to get to that point. Pam instructed us very specifically on what was required for short-term versus long-term, and the forms to fill out, and issued a license for that effect. We also researched several other people in the area, and Mr. Dalton, you do know one of them, from what I understand as well. One of the things that we're very, very careful to do, because my background is interior design, and we had spent an extensive amount of money on that property because we lived in that property ourselves, and we're extremely concerned about all the materials and all the landscaping. At our time when we rented it out, when we were in Japan, we had thousands and thousands, over twenty thousand dollars worth of damage that occurred in six months off of one renter, with landscape dying, with the materials inside being disrupted, and everything you could dream of going wrong. And we were looking for a tighter system, more controlled on how to prevent damage and how to prevent problems in the neighborhood, and should there be a need to quickly evict what we could do, how we could take care of the situation within 24 hours. And that was why we decided to go that system after realizing that other people within the community were doing the same thing. We've since been very, very careful with the contracts, checking with neighbors, to make sure that nothing goes wrong on that property. We've gotten, so that there's no parties allowed. And granted, at the start, we made a mistake in indicating that they could take and possibly have like a party at that location if they checked city codes and checked with us so that we could go through to issue anything that was necessary. We were informed by Pam Gillis that that was not correct and that was not legal, and we turned around and changed the contract immediately on being informed that, so that there were no further violations. We have done everything to comply any time that we've even had a question on anything and called to follow through. So this is a case where, in our situation, we've done everything to make absolutely sure, especially because of the fact that these are neighbors, that we have gone to their weddings, we've gone to their funerals, we have socialized with them, we know their daughters, we know their sons. We're absolutely, totally concerned, and we had intended that someday, hopefully, we'd even move back into that property as a retirement property. Just at this time, my needs were that I needed an art studio and a larger facility, and that was the only reason we had for moving out at all. So this isn't a case of a long-term or absent proprietor, or somebody that doesn't care about this property. We've been exactly the opposite. We run no other businesses out of that home. We keep that home immaculate, and I welcome any of you to drive by and look at how perfectly we keep that place. We'll open it up to you at any time, just let us know. And we have it throughout all our contracts that we can drop by on a moment's notice, too. And we're at that property all the time, working on the yard, which is one of my passions, and working on the interior of the place. So we just wanted you to take a full look at the surrounding circumstances regarding that. Also, with the way you're orienting your documents right now, it affects about twenty other vacation homes that are throughout Garden Grove and short-term rentals throughout Garden Grove. We only rent to single-family units. They have to be single-family, and they have to tell us, every single person that's coming, including their babies. And they have, right on the contracts, it says, "No noise, no disturbing neighbors, no nothing." They, and we, if anything happens, we can just kick them out on a moment's notice. And they're told they cannot violate anything that Garden Grove has, so we're very, very, very strict, and we want to keep it that way. And we're open to suggestions to make it more so, because we want this area and this city to be beautiful, and we want to keep that investment that we have in that home that we hope to move back into someday just as beautiful.
Thank you. David Ville.
Good evening, Mayor, council, and staff. It's been a while since I've been here, haven't had a reason to be here. As long as our members are happy and they don't have anything to complain about, well then I don't have anything to complain about. But I'm mainly here to issue more or less an invitation to people that aren't aware of some of the things that we do here. We always meet, the third Tuesday of every month, we meet in Room B here in this building, and we are, we're all, we're made up of all volunteers... And we're all, we're made up of all volunteers, and we all are working to try to help our seniors age with a little bit of dignity and respect. And our biggest concern really is the health and safety of our seniors. And this is mainly what I'm here with mainly, I know that we don't have a whole lot of people here, but there's some people out there watching the television that might be interested about this. Our guest speaker for February the 16th, that's next Tuesday, will be Carol Tryron. And her program, she is the coordinator for Human Options for Seniors. Now, I wasn't aware of some of the things that I was told, but her topic will be family violence and abuse of late life of seniors and the elderly. Nationwide, this has become a problem of epidemic proportions that is underreported. She hopes to make the public aware of the problem and provide them with information and answers to stop this abuse. This may be one of our most informative and important means of the year in helping our seniors maintain their dignity and respect that they deserve for having raised these now ungrateful adult children, relatives, that care, the caregivers, nursing homes, seniors, centers, and others are also guilty of elderly abuse. Now, again, I was, this is something that I'm not aware of, but if this is really happening, I think that the public should become aware of it. So if you have any experience or know of anyone in this deplorable situation, please bring this information to the meeting that we're going to be having here next Tuesday. And again, like I said before, our main concern here is really to help our seniors and our elderly age with a little bit of dignity and respect. And what we mainly have at most of our means, almost every one of our means, we have a doctor or someone regarding healthcare where they come and talks to our group, and they give us a little bit of information of the different drugs that are good for you and some of the drugs that are bad for you, and vitamins that you should not be taking and that all of these things have side effects. They give you, they give us a lot of good information. So if there are seniors out there that would like to, I know that they're concerned about their health, and as people age, you know, this is what happens. I was asked earlier, why aren't you up there talking about fireworks anymore? I said, "Well, believe it or not, most of them passed away, the ones that were really concerned, the ones that were really hurting, the ones that were really terrified about these things, they're no longer with us," you know. The thing is this, as we age, this is what happens. We're all here temporarily, and so we try to make the best of it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Rod Powell. Peter Katz.
Council, Mayor, staff, and residents, tonight I have two issues to address. First, the GO local light rail project, capsulated in the joint venture agreement between San Ana and Garden Grove, is on the fast track. Why? Because there's $1 billion in federal stimulus money available for this shovel-ready project that would build a streetcar line from the train station in San Ana to Garden Grove. Only Anaheim is in competition for these funds with San Ana and Garden Grove. In addition, $200 million of Measure M money is designated for projects of this type. I believe this project will be built. I attended the open house public comment session at the train station on February 2nd along with Keith Jones. We must convince the OCTA that this is a good project benefiting both cities. So I encourage people to write letters of support for the project to the OCTA. Second, I want to express my sincere thanks for this council's unanimous support in appointing me to serve on the exploratory committee to bring a Vietnam War museum to Garden Grove if the feasibility study supports such a project. The New Orleans Saints Super Bowl victory has rallied the city of New Orleans and its residents around a can-do spirit that will pull the city together. I hope your faith in this project will enable us to rally this community and surrounding communities to build something that we can all be proud of. It will fit in perfectly with the new economics of this century. California is on the cutting edge of a new economic golden age. Eighty percent of world trade in this century will be with Asia. The economies of Japan, India, China, South Korea, and Vietnam will tremendously benefit California, especially Southern California. The ports of Los Angeles and Long Beach are the number one and number two ports in the entire country, handling more than 12 million cargo containers each year. Chinese, Japanese, Korean, and Vietnam immigrants have built strong ties with this economic engine that will only grow in importance for this golden state. So in closing, I want to wish everyone a happy prosperous new year, and let's build a museum we can all take pride in, one that will generate a deep appreciation and understanding of how one generation suffered and endured so much, one that will teach the insanities and horrors of war and the high price we pay to be free. Thank you.
Thank you. Charles Mitchell.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and staff. I am definitely in support of a museum in Garden Grove, but a couple of things have occurred to me. Now, I belong to a couple of different veteran organizations, and I have had the honorable experience of meeting veterans of all of our conflicts from World War II up to the present. And I thought about the fact that we have a sister city agreement with the city of Hyeong in South Korea. And given that we have such a large Korean population in this city, I wondered, why aren't we including the forgotten war in Korea in this memorial for veterans? I don't think many of you realize that no peace treaty has ever been signed with North Korea, and that although the newspapers and television report casualties that were suffering in the Middle East, we continually suffer casualties on the DMZ along the Korean border to this day. So I think it might be appropriate that we include other periods in this museum so that people from all of our city, from whatever cultural background they come from, can appreciate what the veterans have done to preserve the freedom that we have in this country. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to close all communications and recess the council. We'll go to the agency. At this time, we'll open up the agency for community development. Please call roll Mrs. Paylor.
Member Dalton.
Here.
Member Doe.
Here.
Member Jones.
Here.
Vice Chair Nguyen.
Here.
Chair Broadwater.
Here. Okay, we know, we threw all communications. There are no consent items, no public hearing. We have item for consideration for A. Mr. Fratell.
Mr. Chairman, you have an affordable housing agreement with Tamerlane Associates for purchase of properties on Tamerlane, and Mr. Brown is here to give you a staff report on this.
Thank you, Mr. Fratell. Chairman Broadwater, members of the agency, before you tonight, is a request that the agency approve two affordable housing agreements with Tamerlane Associates LLC for the purchase of 12162 and 12172 Tamerlane. Since 2004, Vista Communities has been acquiring multifamily properties on Tamerlane with city and agency financial assistance. There are a total of 16 buildings on Tamerlane, and to date, 11 buildings have been acquired with a total of 61 units. As these buildings are adjacent to our hotel district and were in many cases having a negative impact on the district and the surrounding neighborhood, an effort was made to acquire these properties as they became available. The properties acquired to date by Vista Communities have been managed by a professional management company, which has made a very positive impact on the street. After the acquisitions of these two buildings tonight, there will be three remaining multifamily properties on Tamerlane. As with prior transactions, Vista will rehabilitate the units in both properties. The basic terms of these agreements are as follows. For 12162 Tamerlane, consists of an agency loan of $592,000 plus a developer fee of $32,000. For 12172 Tamerlane, consists of an agency loan of approximately $980,000 plus a developer fee of $50,000. Under both agreements, the agency loans shall accrue simple interest at the rate of 3% annually. Payments of these loans will be made on an annual basis from 75% of the residual cash flow from the properties as available. As the agency is a partner with the developer, it has the option to repurchase the properties over a 20-year period. The financial impact of these agreements are limited to the redevelopment Housing Set Aside Fund in a total amount of $1,654,725 and are in allowable use of such funds. Staff recommends the following: that the agency adopt the resolutions approving the affordable housing agreements and authorize the agency director to execute the agreements on behalf of the agency. Staff is available to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Any questions for staff? Hearing no questions, we entertain a motion.
Move the item.
We have a motion to move.
Second.
We have a second. Call for the vote.
I need you to revote because somebody had pushed a button on one of the extra desks, sorry. Motion received, five yes votes.
Okay, any matter from agency members? At this time, we'll adjourn for two weeks from tonight. And we'll reconvene the city council meeting and let the record show that all members are present. We have consent items next.
Mr. Mayor, it's recommended items 6A through 6I be acted on simultaneously unless a separate discussion or action is requested by a council member.
Move the balance.
Second.
Have motion second. Call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Okay, number 10, ordinances presented for second reading.
Mr. Mayor, item 10A is ordinance number 2767, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Garden Grove adopting a revised development agreement between Torah Number 3 LP and the city of Garden Grove for a property located on the southeast corner of Stanford Avenue and Adele Street at 8642 Stanford Avenue, Garden Grove, parcel number 133-463-11.
So moved.
You have a motion? And a second. Call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
10B.
10B is ordinance number 2768, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Garden Grove adopting a negative declaration and approving amendment number A-151-09, an amendment to Title IX of the Garden Grove Municipal Code relating to group homes, boarding lodging facilities, and child daycare facilities.
So moved.
You have a motion, second. Call for the vote. I have a question here. There's been some talk about, and I think it has to do with this couple that spoke to Whites here, that this motion has something, this ordinance has something to do with short-term rental situation. I went completely through it, I found nothing that had it. Am I correct?
You are, Mr. Broadwater. There are, there's nothing in this ordinance that addresses that. It doesn't address the issue of vacation rental business in the R1 zone at all.
Okay. Okay, call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
10C.
10C is ordinance number 2769, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Garden Grove approving code amendment number A-152-09 to incorporate landscape water efficiency requirements into Title IX, the zoning ordinance reorganized October 2009 of the municipal code.
So moved.
Second. Have motion second. Call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
In a minute, we're going to adjourn to a closed session, but prior to that, Mr. Broadwater, do you have any comments? Yeah, I have a couple of comments. I'd certainly like to talk to Mr. Vu, the architect. I love architects, and I think that his idea was a great idea. I know the Vietnamese Memorial in Washington, DC was put on sort of a contest basis, and it was designed, took a number of months to get it happened, but some young Vietnamese girl in those days won the contest, and I think that's a great idea. So certainly like to speak with you if we may. If Mr. and Mrs. White would like to talk to me afterwards, I'd certainly like to talk to them, see if we can get their problem fixed one way or another.
No, no, you haven't got a right to mention.
You already did that, so.
No, no, it's over with.
So at this time, that's it. I have nothing else for tonight. Hope the keep, keeps raining. I've got feed and weed on my backyard, and I want it to work. Okay, Ms. Nguyen.
Yes, I want to remind everyone that there's a Tet Festival this weekend on the Saturday, and it starts on Friday, goes to Saturday, and then Sunday at the Garden Grove Park. They have it there every year. Please come, join them, have fun, and support the Vietnamese Student Union because they support about 10 of our nonprofit organizations in Garden Grove. Also, we have the Tet Parade in the city of Westminster in which our council will be joining them on our great big yellow fire truck like every year. I wanted to thank everyone for the input as far as the Vietnam War Museum. We welcome any comments on that. And also, I want to remind everyone to buy in Garden Grove, it's very important. We, our sale taxes are going down, so we're going to have to really give it 200% and try to remember to buy in the city of Garden Grove. Also, I want to congratulate the Christ of Latter Day for having their new bishop this month. And also, we have the healthcare reform that's just passed by the House, 69 to 30, I think. And if you want to know more information on that, you can go on to the healthcare reform website, and we should have that for you by the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Just hoping for good weather this weekend for the Tet Parade and the Tet Festival, and hope everyone will come out and join in the celebration.
Mr. Doe.
I just want to mention to Mr. and Mrs. White, you might want to email the information so you don't give the same talk to probably multiple members on the council. Would like to learn whatever information that you provide. We will look into it. We, you know, we will try to see both sides of the issues, but the material you give us is quite voluminous, and I certainly can't, can't finish reading all of it by tonight's meeting. But I intend to, at some point, walk my way through it and give it a very fair look, okay? Thank you.
Okay, ditto for that. Okay, now we're going to adjourn to council closed session.